We are here to accomplish the business of schools for our students. The board does not, does want to hear from members of the public. However, the comments have been limited to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure that this meeting is reasonable in length. It has been brought to the attention of this board from concerned constituents that even though we have asked for it to limit their comments to three minutes, this has not been effective. We will therefore ask that all comments from this point forward be respectful of the time limit. If you have more information than can be delivered, please provide. Leave behind materials for the board and the Rogers, or to the board will keep time and will let the moderator know when comments are reaching or have exceeded the requested limit. If you have questions during the session, you may ask your representative or school administrator for clarification after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight. Is there a motion concerning the adoption of the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Grove, second Ms. Johnson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, goes no. It's ordered. Is our student representative here tonight? Virginia. All right. All right, moving on to donations.
I have one donations report. It's from Legacy Farm Market. They donated flower pots and trays for their agriculture and biology classes.
All right. Thank you very much. We will accept those donations with letter thanks during the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt minutes from our April 11th meeting? We have a motion from Mr. Grove, second Mr. Rubin. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, goes no. It's ordered. Ms. Johnson, did you review bills?
Yes, I did. And the bills also listed as the warrants are on the consent agenda as well.
Also on the consent agenda is personnel report and which is the acceptance of all of the contracts for the coming year and also the addition of... opposition, yeah. We need to... No, I haven't done it yet. I'm just reviewing what's in the thing and then we'll adopt. Dr. Blair, do you want to read through that or do you want...
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Board.
I don't have the name.
Retirement effect of June 30th, Margaret Bright. We have resignation, Alice Strickler, Liz Dotson, Eva Payne. We have new hires Carmen Ayler, sixth grade math, Julie Ruth, sixth and seventh grade language arts, and Stacy Witt, our new director of finance. Our transfers, physical education to high school, as Mr. Colton Ball, and due to their commit to be fit grant, Ms. Jackie Keeter will assume that position. We have two new bus drivers, Billy Horton and Shonda Graves. We also have some bus driver trainees, Michael Pazier, Courtney King, Wanda Puppence, and Chris Williams.
Also, in this personnel report, we'd be, we're going to be adding a position of a social worker to the division. Masters in, masters in social work to the division. He's also part of the personnel currently available. All right. So now, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a motion? I have a motion, Mr. Rubin, is there a second? Did I miss it? Is there a second now?
No.
We might be... Discussion. We may. You want to table that one portion?
Table the addition of the social worker position?
No, the, the, the new hire's portion of the consent agenda. The personnel section of the consent agenda.
All right. So are you saying that you want to cover this after closed session this evening? You're tabling it until the next school meeting?
No, no, no.
Until the...
Oh, okay. During the, no, during the next closed session.
Right now that... So, just so you're aware, what would happen after the evening closed session, we would come out of that closed session and have a motion regarding personnel and the approval of personnel. All right. So at this particular moment, the motion to approve the consent agenda was not seconded and fails. This motion to approve the consent agenda would include donations, warrants, and the attendance report. Is there a motion to approve donations, warrants, and attendance report?
Good move.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove, second Ms. Johnson. All in favor, aye. Aye, goes no. It's ordered. I just saw, didn't you come in? Hey, Virginia. Hey, we skipped over you. Do you want to, do you want to come now?
Um, sure.
Uh, wait, wait, wait. Are you, were you prepared?
Yes.
Okay, great. It's good to hear from you anytime.
Sorry, I forgot my number. Sorry about that. So obviously, we have been in high gear these past few weeks because we are rapidly approaching the end of the year. We hit the ground running when we got back from spring break and so we're entering the home stretch, but a lot of interesting things are still happening. We've got some great accomplishments from our students with some notable examples being our over 20 medalists for the Latin and Spanish exams. Those were the national exams and we have over 20 medals this year. Our personal finance team also recently went to the national competition, the governor's challenge, and they finished ninth out of 18 teams there, so we're very excited for them. That was in Kansas City last weekend. So our community service work is continuing with the most recent examples being the Rio Club. They had another successful trash pickup and they're continuing their weekly service of the black belt volunteer program. Our quizzle team just finished their is academic competition and they finished second in their team with that. The scholarship presentation ceremony went excellently for our seniors. We had over 50 scholarships to offer them that totaled over $125,000 and so that was easily a 50% increase over last year's scholarship total, so we're very excited about that. Yes. Right now, we are in the middle of our SOL testing as well as our AP testing, so it's very busy for Ms. Toppa, but she says it's going well along with Ms. Bun and Mr. Swandler. The senior banquet was just this last Saturday and so the theme for that was Tony Rhodes and Rappahannock. So the high school was transformed, the commons area, to be a reflection of Rappahannock County. And so a good time was had by all there. Our sports teams are wrapping up the spring season with our senior nights either recently having taken place or scheduled to occur soon. Our cross-country state champion Gavin Jenkins, he just set the personal and school record 1,600 last weekend and that's in Charlotte as well, so very excited there. We have our district track meet tomorrow and so it's likely that our city is going to be taking large contingent to stay. We also have our senior trip coming up for our seniors, so they're going to New York City this weekend. And our eighth graders and peer mentors, we're all going to be going to a celebratory field trip next week, so that's going to be fun. We're also going to have final exams held for our high school classes next week and the academic award ceremony is going to be next Thursday at 2:00 PM. And so last but not least, our baccalaureate ceremony is going to be held on Sunday night, that's May 21st, and graduation is the following Friday, which is May 26th. So it's hard to believe that we're almost done with this school year, but it has been a good one and we accomplished a lot this year. So I look forward to getting to share more news of the school next fall with you guys.
The year junior.
Yeah.
Thank you, happy night. Always good to hear from Virginia. 7:00, regulation is 7:00 on a Friday night, 26th. All right. Dr. Blair?
Thank you, Chairman. We have a presentation by Hannah Dow, student volunteer for White Street, the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth. Hannah?
Hi, my name is Hannah Dow and I was questioned before mapping at Campbell. I'm here today as a member of White Street. White Street is a world-winning youth program of the Virginia Foundation for Helping Youth that focuses on women helping women in Virginia. I'm here to talk about how White Street's 24/7 campaign is helping White Street schools be tobacco-recibed within 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Under a 100% comprehensive policy, the tobacco-recibed use, possession, and distribution is prohibited by anyone, anywhere, at any time. At Rappahannock County, the school is a long progress toward being a 100% tobacco-free. I met with our principal, Mr. Toppa, about White Street's 24/7 campaign and committed to several actions, like making the tobacco-free announcement at sporting events. The Rappahannock County Division is doing a great job to help the students, staff, and visitors. We would like to recommend specific updates that would create a 100% comprehensive policy. First, we recommend updating the definition of property in our policies. It specifies many places where tobacco is prohibited, but there's potential gray areas that may not cover. We recommend that the updated policies include all school premises outside and inside, whether owned or leased, rented, or traveled by the school division. Include any school sponsors or school-related events, whether on or off site. We want the ability for principals or administrators to exempt those smoking areas on the outside school buildings. Second, prohibit the use and distribution of tobacco products containing nicotine or electronic smoking devices by staffs, contractors, and visitors, whether on or off site. Third, extend the policy to possession and distribution of tobacco products by students and minors. Fourth, define tobacco products and tobacco use to include electronic smoking devices and products that contain nicotine. By including these terms directly in your definition in all policies, documents, that it is clear that the entire policy applies to alternate products. Fifth, provide comprehensive visits. Comprehensive visits support the administration and the staff on the ground to ensure the policy is enforced. Sixth, simplify your requirements for tobacco-free. Generally, it requires signs that feature symbols, but we recommend a more general requirement so signs can feature current products for disease codes. Finally, expand language to provide referrals to association resources with staff and students, such as members of quitting outlines and website resources. The 24/7 tobacco-recibed piece will be included, which is provided to all schools in comprehensive divisions, feature these resources, and make it easier to offer them as necessary. As a partner of resource to Rappahannock County Division, we are here to offer to help update our tobacco policy so that it includes all tobacco-free language. Once you decide to adopt a new policy, the 24/7 campaign has a great way to support implementing and enforcing the policy. First, we will provide free tobacco-free sign to all schools in the district. Second, our free tobacco-recibed toolkit will be sent to all schools immediately. Third, we will add you to our official, to our comprehensive division, our online website. Finally, in your folder, you will find examples of how we help your school commission and positive publicity for updating the tobacco policy. On behalf of White Street, we thank you for taking three times today to learn more about the 24/7 campaign, and I hope that Rappahannock becomes a 29th school division with a policy said tobacco-free policy. Thank you.
I could never have done that when I was a parent. I'm scared of that.
I have you.
You are. We are in the process of, we're preparing to review policy again and this is something that is going to be integrated.
It'll have to be a discussion. We'll be glad to be very organized, very professional. I admire you for being attentive to people. Well done. Well done.
Any questions?
I thought we had a problem.
I thought we did too.
We do. I think it's just thorough though.
Can this just go deep enough?
Well, I haven't looked at that information depth and presented, so what I will do is compare that and give you comparison of our policy, what they would like to do, and see if we can go through it.
I mean, we do have a pretty extensive policy on that.
Just make sure it's up to date. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we also have a presentation about Chromebooks. We love the Chromebooks. Here are...
And I turn over control to the students, they wanted to do it all, so.
Goodbye.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us three minutes of your time. I'm Elaine Frank and teach seventh grade science at that elementary school. And we are here to show our gratitude for the new home parts that are in every single one of our classrooms at the elementary school. So make a memorial, hopefully, as a presentation for you to show our appreciation. I think you're going to play.
This is all a mess of a little bit.
There is a mess of a little bit.
Okay, but...
These things are...
I'm not... This is my head monitor. That's my head monitor. We have charges for every classroom. Are you doing it properly?
It's private.
For the private, are we done successfully?
I've been working with that. I'd like them to do that.
Okay, we love the Chromebooks. The Chromebooks have allowed us as a grade to complete 115,000 questions and 1,100 hours on IXL. IXL is a math skills program where you can practice your math skills. Quotes from your students.
That's incredible.
Google Classroom. We have used Google Classroom to complete assignments, take tests, and access real-time information. Here's an example of Google Classroom. This is Mrs. Frank's Google Classroom and basically you can just access documents and take tests instead of using paper. More quotes from your students. I like how we can all have a Chromebook in our, in every class. That was Luke Ellis. Because of the Chromebooks, we are able to collaboratively create fun, interactive presentations, such as the biome project, which we did in Mrs. Frank's class. More quotes from your students. I like how we don't have to print papers for the teacher to edit, we can just peer edit Shared editing. So teacher and peer editing helps us when writing our research papers for our science projects. So basically, the teacher can highlight a editable piece of information and she can comment what can be edited about it and then share it back. More quotes from your students.
I like how we have free drawers in the classroom who can complete assignments.
No man left behind. Every student has access to a Chromebook at all times, no one is left out. More quotes from your students. The Chromebooks help me stay organized in all my classes, to react. No more dog ate my homework. With the Chromebooks, we can keep all of our documents and papers organized and safe without any of them getting lost or taken. Everyone has a Chromebook to play. Get ready to play.
Right, so you just gotta log into the playbook. You can log in anonymously, so you don't know whether you got it right or wrong. It's your real name. This is our briefing. We use it for review.
She's gonna bring it up. She's bringing it up right now.
And just so you know, this was happening. It's gonna come up for you too.
At the elementary and secondary level, the whole classroom, and most colleges now, your class is, it's a really good idea.
Actually, it's actually not in the cloud. It's in, it's in...
That's cloud, baby.
You're gonna wait here. These students did this presentation on me and I'm very impressed with creativity and ideas.
We did some testing on Chromebooks. And it was very...
Using Chromebook?
Using Chromebook, we did the elementary segment.
What was that? I remember, I'm trying to check. What was the, the... When was the, the headquarter?
That was last year.
Just last? Now, was it one classroom?
We did one classroom and then a classroom, the two. We did the elementary classroom and elementary classroom. See how we're... And we're...
Seven grader?
Are you smarter than the seventh grader?
No.
Just five questions.
So here in a second, I'll pinball here and just enter that in your Chromebook. 7462985.
Enter the name?
Yeah. And then you will enter a name. You can enter your own name, or you can enter your, your nickname.
Wait for what?
Enter your...
And then you can do anonymous or your name.
Is your name, you don't want to put your school name?
No.
Okay. Yeah.
Put that in, but you don't want to...
I don't know who you are. I didn't have a glasses on. You're in.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. Oh, no. All right. We only have four playing.
You're not playing?
No.
Four.
Explain the color code.
Okay, so your answers, the answer will be color coded in all your Chromebook. You just have to click, you'll see there's four sections and they're each different color, and the color corresponds to the color with the answer up here.
Play.
Against each other.
You know what? We gotta do this. We gotta give them...
Okay, there's your first question and it's...
All right, there you go.
What is the following sentence?
What is the following sentence? Ben Daly bought big ones by Britain.
Yeah, just do the color.
There.
Oh.
Boom.
Okay, now here you go. This is for you.
What's its top? All right.
I got those.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Okay, this is a riddle.
This is a riddle.
Thank you for giving us some time and special thanks to Mrs. Paul and Mr. Will for all the help because we had a little rough time with the internet. Sorry, we gotta figure it out.
Thanks. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate it. I think we have...
Give me a type of kiss.
Take the...
So down low.
I think that's...
I think it's...
I'll go with you.
They were all fun. But we get to keep celebrating. I'm here this evening on behalf of Dr. Blair and the school board. We want to recognize two students whose artwork was selected to represent the school board at the Virginia School Board Association Regional Art Contest. Our art teachers, Mrs. Grady and Ms. Richardson at the high school, selected six pieces and they were judged here locally and we had two students selected to represent our school board.
And they were all fun. Well, we get to keep celebrating. I'm here this evening on behalf of Dr. Blair and the school board. We want to recognize two students whose artwork was selected to represent the school board at the Virginia School Board Association Regional Art Contest. Our art teachers, Mrs. Grady and Mrs. Richardson at the high school, selected six pieces. They were judged here locally, and we had two students selected to represent our school board. First, I'm going to ask Mr. Grady to come up, if he will. Mr. Grady teaches art at the elementary school, and I'd like for him to help me present our art. Our elementary school representative was Mrs. Skylar. I'm nervous. Here's my scholar, will you come up first? Share her picture with you all of us, titled "Medestical Line."
Where does it come from?
Represent you with this recognition. Thank you so much, Mr. Grady. Do you want to say anything you want to do? Anything? Thank you so much, and congratulations. Oh, we do. Thank you for reminding me. We will. Skylar, will you loan us your picture for a bit to hang in our offices? And we'll get it back to you at the end of the school year. That's part of the honor. We get to look at it all year. Thank you so much. And then our high school winner, who could not be here tonight because he is participating in an athletic event, was Jack Massey. And so, we will maybe present Mr. Tupper. Mr. Tupper, will you accept his, on his behalf, and get this to him? So, we will present him his piece. And his award.
I've got a copy of this.
Nature's Shadow. By Nature's Shadow.
He's quite artistic. He does a lot of argon, and things too.
And you'll let him know that a little while. Awesome. Thank you so much. So, thank you, Skylar, for your talent sharing with us, and Mr. Tupper will give Jack our things.
Great, great. Good night, little people.
Thank y'all very much. Very talented.
We'll get it home to you, promise. I bet you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This time of year, the Virginia School Board Association provides policy updates for the school board's needs. I mean, we're a bit different this session. What I'd like to do is to dislist the policies, give the board and the public 30 days to review these policies. No action received. At the next, we're going to schedule a board meeting in June, is to vote on these policies. There are about 18 policies. 10 of them basically are legal or cross-references, updates to reflect amendments to the Code of Virginia and United States Code. There's really no content difference. It's just like little footnotes to say we're going to update this. DBFA is Conflict of Interest and Disclosure of Economic Interest. CBCA, disclosure statement required to superintendent. GA, personnel policy goals. GBM, professional staff grievances. GCPEF, suspension of staff members. IJ, guidance and counseling programs. JFCC, student conduct on school buses. JO, student records. KG, community use of facilities. LEB, advanced alternative courses for credit. And again, those are just some footnote of cross-references. There are six policies that, after you approve them, require the superintendent to write guidelines, rules or procedures. WA, student transportation services. EFB, free reduced-price food services. JHCF, student wellness. JGCH, student meals and snacks. JOA, student transcripts. And again, KG, community use of facilities. There is a new policy, GAH. It's an employee's, some employees' conflict of interest. Also requires me to provide information on the Conflict of Interest Act to all school board employees. I plan to do that at the opening of school, at the opening of school. And there is a revision to reflect the change made to the Virginia Board of Education Charter School application, and that is policy LC-E. Leave it all online, anybody can look at. If I read through them, we could be here late into the evening. Anyone that looks at them, access them on board docs. The new information is underlined, and the deleted information is just aligned right through it. You can read those, and I request the boards, as you do every time you possibly, read those in depth, and then we'll come back and vote on those in the next meeting. Any questions, comments?
I guess the review of the tobacco... We have several of them at this point.
I think so. I think if we want lots of input from the board, I could send it to you, and...
I think, whatever we do, we wait till that's done, and we'll look at it.
Sounds good. Yes, sir. Shanny Grinbl, executive director of Acting of Services, and the Commit to Be Fit team. Coordinator, Deputy Teedrick. Wellness integration specialist, Jackie Lo Barton and Hallie Ann Jenkins. Nutrition specialist, Amanda Groh, and the Acting Now, Norma Racking. The director of finance, Stacy Witt, will be, will give an overview of the Commit to Be Fit pilot project. We are so fortunate that you all are doing this outstandingly. So, Mr. Grinbl?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for that lovely introduction, but as you, I'm sure you can count, one of us is missing. Literally about 45 minutes ago, one of our wellness integration specialists, Hallie Jenkins, was suffering from a complication due to some medical procedures, so we made her go to the hospital right before this presentation. We didn't want any... You know, we're presenting on wellness. No, we're not. So, she feels very horribly she can't be here, but it's very interesting. So, we're going to talk to you about this year, what we did. The Path Foundation generously gave us $100,000 to do a pilot program on creating a wellness program here in Rappahannock County. So, we wanted to give you an overview of what we measured, what we did, what happened, and where we're going to go from here. So, we have so many videos, pictures, and just so many things to highlight, but instead, we were privileged for Hallie to make us some videos. So, you guys, please watch it for a moment to see our highlights. We have many workout videos on our YouTube channel. We can cut them.
We're not going to do that to my children.
No. It is not. This is an ad. Nice job. All right, our overall goal of this project, it started out as a brainstorm about how do we get our children to think healthier, make healthier choices, and it stemmed into, you know, we really need to tackle this from a three-pronged approach, because to really enact that kind of impact that we're looking at, we understood that we would have to impact the overall wellness of the entire community. Whew, that's kind of a hard thing to do. So, how did we do that? So, we thought about, okay, we have to take this from a whole bunch of angles. So, broadly, it took the form of healthier, tastier cafeteria menu that the kids are really involved with creating. It would take kinesthetic movement in the classrooms, with a wellness integration person, after-school wellness programs and workshops for community members, and a challenge, to really challenge folks to join us, to join with us on this wellness journey, to show our kids that it is important, and to create a culture of wellness and healthy wellness. That's our broad goals of the program. Our objective is creating the new cafeteria menu. When we set this, initially wrote this goal, we were looking at at least 10. And when it was in its infancy, we, of course, didn't know we would have the stellar team in that stadium, because they're fantastic. So, it has to adhere to the state and federal guidelines, but also, we wanted it healthier, more nutritious. We wanted to monitor profit margins and all of this, to see if it would make a difference, but also, we need the requirements that were needed to make. We wanted to incorporate kinesthetic learning techniques, because, you know, with the ASL culture and the way that our instruction has been transformed over the years, there is a lot of sit time, and there's a high demand for students to be stationary in the classroom to take in that amount of content. So, we wanted to reduce sit time by 25%. We wanted to offer at least eight after-school sessions, each conducted on healthy living, cooking classes, fitness classes, all sorts of things that were free for our members who joined with us for the pilot. And then we also wanted to decrease staff, parent, and community average BMI by 15% for those who joined the challenge. So, those were our initial objectives.
Someone should mention, we really wanted to start off and hear from the students. What do they want to see in the cafeteria? We want them to enjoy it, and so, we started off with surveys in the fall, kind of asked them, what do they currently like, or would they like to see added, improved? Really get some open feedback from them. So, we took that into account, and I ran it. Some of the feedback wasn't necessarily feasible. We had some steak, you know, and some of them were not necessarily feasible, or maybe fit into what we wanted to move towards healthier options. So, we gave those. At the high school level, there was the question to kind of gauge their perception of what was currently offered, if those healthy or not. So, that kind of gives us more data to compare. And then, we really talked to our cafeteria managers. We wanted a really open partnership. They're the ones, this is their kitchen, they're going to be doing. They put in so much hard work, they're the ones that really need to have a say in it as well. So, we looked at what the students wanted, kind of pulled together some healthy recipes, and then talked to our managers, and kind of had their input, because they know the students really well, and they know what they'll actually eat, and kind of, kind of work from there. One of our goals was, we want to increase more freshly-prepared meals, kind of go back to scratch cooking. And the students noticed, one of the menu items with the chicken pasta, mac and cheese was a favorite in the suggestion on the surveys. So, we added broccoli, we added chicken, a little less cheese, a little lower fat of cheese, just to kind of, you got to find a good, healthy balance of what they're actually going to eat, and kind of, kind of experiment from there. But it was all made that in the cafeteria, and it had even just black pepper, and one little boy was like, ooh, it's kind of spicy. I mean, they could tell in that whole cooked meal, and, you know, the cafeteria, they take a lot of pride in that, and so, it's been going really well. We have been doing taste testings of the new menu items. We kind of started at the front of the line as they went through, and they, we kind of realized most of them weren't going to pick up that new menu item, so then, we took the cart out to kind of really hit our packers and our teachers, kind of expose them to some of the new things, and that was a good way to kind of get some feedback, one-on-one with those students as well. And to kind of, the data, we've been measuring cafeteria sales, as well as student feedback. In this, in April, it's a newsletter. One of our sixth graders, for one of her projects on the Chromebooks, we headed into the cafeteria, we created a survey together, and we headed into the cafeteria during breakfast when we had one of our new menu items, the fruit yogurt parfait, in the elementary school. We got some data from the students. The overall was love it. We had love it, like it, just okay, and hate it, as the ratings. So, that was the overall, and then we also got, you know, some more open-ended feedback, which the student is going to put together in a report. In the previous Chromebook presentation, it was helpful because it's light, we went into the cafeteria, but also, in the Google Classroom, she could share it with her classmates. Hey, take this quick survey. It was just instant feedback, so it went really well. So, these were some of the new menu items that we added. So, we started, so I came on full-time in January, so we kind of planned, really had on in January and February is when we introduced the new items. One of the big things that I really wanted to do was have fresh fruit every day, start working towards more fresh produce in the cafeteria, which, I believe from the previous side of the picture and in the video, we went around and we had students taste test, and they got to vote, and suggest some more fresh fruit, what they want to really see in the cafeteria. So, some of the stars, so our cinnamon-free nachos, which was the previous, the whole bran tortilla, cinnamon, sugar baked, and then strawberries, blueberries, yogurt. That by far has been the top seller breakfast, every time we've offered it. So, that has gone really well. The students really like it, both sales and feedback on the survey. The other star besides southwest vegetable, that was our lowest for the month. So, again, we're just, we're taking all the data, coming through another school division, kind of learning how other schools do it, and then kind of giving more options, more variety, maybe a taco bar, where they would like to choose meat, or they like to choose beans for that protein. So, we're really open and kind of moving forward, to make sure the students are enjoying it. So, as you can see on the graph, again, these are total lunch, total lunches sold, both elementary and high. Do take in account for holidays, so Thanksgiving break, Christmas break, spring break, those obviously are an effective tendence in total sales. So, February, when we really went with all the new menu items, so it steadily increased. March was our highest of lunches for the whole year, the new menu items. So, things are going well. We're really, we're open to the feedback, and kind of learning as we go. So, aside from cafeteria changes, we're also doing nutrition education and outreach. So, we go into the classroom, often with Jackie sometimes, and we'll pair together that movement lesson, added nutrition, and really talk about it together. We also do workshops for both our adults and the community challenge. We also do workshops for both our adults and the community challenge, and then kids cooking classes, which have been, we had a blast with those. One boy, we had him on Saturday, he was at the high school culinary room, and one boy just loved it and he was like, so do we come back tomorrow or next Saturday? So, we told him, you know, we're going to keep adding them, right now this is the only one. So, we had, we really had a great time with those. And in both schools, we have daily health tips on the morning announcements, Tuesday folder, monthly nutrition newsletters, go home, excuse me, as well as for our community faith group, one-on-one nutrition counseling. The picture at the bottom, ooh, sorry, it's okay. If you're in the elementary school during the year, I hope you get a chance to check it out. We did a poster contest, March is National Nutrition Month. We kind of gave them the open vague prompt of why is eating healthy important? So, if you get a chance, please go check it out. The answers, I mean, they varied and they were so unique and creative. We had, we had a hard time judging, but it was, it was really cool to see their thought process behind it, so.
So, I know, sorry, someone jumped in, but with everything new with our menus going on, I think we need to give a huge amount of props to our amazing cafeteria, because they're resident, no whining, no complaining, no, I mean, they're pretty much excited.
Yeah.
Manny sits down with each one of them at the beginning of the month of playing that new menu. They come with ideas, they know what's going to work with their kids, and Manny says, I want to do this. We're like, I'm not really sure what's going to work. The Southwest ball was one of those things, but we tried it because we wanted to try something new, but they have been a huge asset to this whole program because without them, it would not have worked at all. But they, they have been excited, they're ready for the changes. Julie probably had the most changes at the elementary school because we were heat and serve on 90% of our meals up there. And they have been willing and happy to do the cooking. I mean, they're excited. I went down there one day, they were doing stir fry. So, I was down there early and Robyn Fry came running out and was like, you eating lunch today? I mean, she was excited, it was done, it was ready, she knew it was good, she had it wrapped and ready for me to go out the door before I left. So, they're taking a big pride in everything they're doing too. So, without them, it would not be successful.
All right, so I was tasked with the classroom movement portion. I started in September and I am a part-time employee, so I had about 20 hours a week to work with to incorporate movement into the classroom and to our students' daily, daily, you know, routine, yeah. So, our traditional classroom is, it's very sedentary, it's usually lecture style, you know, it's content focused, of course, and we have those three special letters, SOLs, right? That's what we have to pass, that's the most important thing. As a former classroom teacher, I completely understood that. And when I was tasked with this, I wanted so deeply to bring something to teachers that was not going to be trouble, that was not going to add into their, their stress or anything that they had to focus on, but was actually going to help them and their students. So, movement becomes an afterthought in the traditional classroom. Now, research states that that's actually quite the opposite, that students need about 16 minutes of physical activity a day and we know that most of our students aren't going home and getting that activity, so we have to provide it for them in the classroom. Students who are more physically active are better performing, which the data is increasingly leading to that. So, a kinesthetic classroom is an incorporation of movement paired with the standards. Again, I wanted to bring something to teachers that did not have, I didn't want to hear, I don't have time for it. Because if you're teaching to the standards and you incorporate a little bit of movement, you will have time for it. And actually, you'll find that your students really enjoy it and it kind of breaks up a little bit and they, they might retain just a little bit more. And, and overall, you know, just with the kinesthetic classroom, it's just increased student movement. So, that can show its, its way in the form of brain breaks, which are just two recurring breaks that you'll take, you know, in the middle of instruction. It could be just a quick little, something to get them smiling or get them moving around. Or it can be something more intensive where you're having them, you know, do some math, math facts really quick, but they're standing up, they're moving around and they're getting their blood pumping a little bit. So, as I said, I was tasked with doing this portion and Shannon so nicely asked me for data. And so, we had to figure out how we were going to measure our student movement in the classroom. And if you can see the trend, now you can't see, you know, from the audience, you can't see like the numbers on the bottom. If you can, your eyes are much better than mine. But kindergarten starts at the bottom and then it goes all the way up to high school. So, you can see how the movement goes down, the more you get, the older you get with the students. Reading is also a very inactive time. So, it was clearly, clearly a need that we needed to bring in some movement. So, that's what we did. I went into about 19 classrooms, just shot 20, I think I just counted one more, so maybe 20, 20 classrooms, some of them more regularly. They were mostly in the lower grades. I did have one high school classroom that I came in on a regular basis and it became the culture in their classroom. And they didn't just come, do this when I was coming into the classroom. They walked in there on a random day or at a different time, those students were still in a different period, doing something active or jumping jacks or something like that to answer questions. So, here, so here we have a classroom that Manny and I were both frequently in. And in this case, we were using our bodies to answer questions, multiple choice questions. So, maybe A was jumping jacks and B was toe touches and C was this, this movement right here, which you can call it both toes or whatever you want. And then D was, I don't know, knee kicks or something like that. And so, if the student thought that the answer was, you know, A, B, C or D, they'd show us with that. What you find is students are in a more relaxed environment, students are happier and they're getting healthier. So, you know, that's, that's so important. And also, I did kids yoga as well. Kids yoga was offered on, usually after school, but if I noticed that there was, you know, rain outside and I was in the office and I had a ton, what I would do is I would just shoot an email to see if they wanted me to come for recess time, just to kind of get that, that extra movement. And then also, I worked with individual students either on an SOL prep basis or on a behavioral basis.
You guys ready to get moving? Jumping jacks?
I was ready for that.
Just kidding. Let you off this time. Okay, so.
You don't want to see this guy going up and down.
I'll see you tomorrow, I'll be on the school bus. So, I was under the task with Holly, well, all of us really, we met once a month to try to figure out how to get our staff and our community, you know, part of this challenge that we talked about, becoming a healthier repahonic, right? So, we decided to do a six-month challenge and it was going to be free for the community and the staff. And so, we decided that we would do a mandatory check-in, where, you know, if you signed up for free, we would coach you for the six months. Part of that challenge was free classes and you saw the video, yoga, circuit, you know, zumba, danceathon, we did, you name it, we did it. And we would offer those after school and try to engage the staff as well as the community. So, we started with the staff. We did a wellness day and right at the beginning of the year, all staff for the public schools got a Fitbit and got a nice little hoodie bag. So, they had a gym bag and they had a yoga block and they had a mat. So, we gave them the tools, we were hoping that was an encouragement and it did. So, then we, we had a opening, a six-month challenge wellness day, it was on a staff development day, I think it was. And it was open to the community and so that was an opportunity for them to sign up. And so, that worked out well. We had 157, yeah, 157 participants in the six-month challenge. So, part of that was to check in monthly and we, the criteria was, we weighed you, we measured you, chest, waist and hips. And with your weight and your height, we could figure out your NIMAs. And so, and blood pressure, yeah, that was another one of the points. And so, that was the data that we used. And we did monthly prizes, we tried to, you know, engage our participants with prizes, you know, spa here, dirty net massage. We had some videos, we had gym memberships that we did. So, we were able to do all that and that was it, that was the challenge that we did. So, next slide, please. So, with our challenge, we had, this was our winner at our six-month challenge. And you can, you can see the difference. She lost 60 pounds. She came in to Holly, Holly worked with her really one-on-one. And she was turning 40 in April when the challenge started in October. And so, she said, why not? You know, I got six months, I want to lose 40 pounds or 60 pounds. And so, she was able to do that. So, it's just amazing, the inspiration that she's given us and others, you know, in this challenge. So, what a trooper and she's definitely, it just shows what hard work, you know, can do and it pays off. So, the teacher community wellness. So, again, I told you that we gave them back-to-school gift bags and we had a wellness day, told you about that. And our challenge, and we had different classes and workshops and events. We did a weekly newsletter, Holly did really well with that. She sent a weekly newsletter of accomplishments, our daily, our monthly schedule and weekly schedule and highlights for the challenge. We had a Facebook group that we, that we started and we had members were able to get on Facebook, we could communicate with them that way. And, and we have YouTube channel, we did some videos, we did some videos where like you could work out at home in your PJs video. And so, people were able to log on YouTube and if you were able, were able to hear our classes in the evening, you were able to get on YouTube and kind of get up and work out then. So, that was the start of hopefully more videos to come. So, our goal was eight after-school activities for the year. And so, I think we surpassed that tremendously. So, next slide. So, to date, and this was in April, we've offered 271 classes, workshops and events. So, we are really excited that we surpassed the number eight and we are enrolling and we're probably past 300 now for the, the year. So, we're excited about next year. If you'd like to channel that.
We're just, as you can see, really excited. We didn't know that our pilot would take off as it was and it just became our model and it was just a pilot. So, we're really excited to expand and, you know, Kristen Dewitt from TAF, our program director, who's not saying anything about it, but we are. We give it up, will we fund again next year? Yeah. I don't know if you got her, but yeah. We love her, she helps us along the way and everything.
Well, the feeling is entirely mutual. The TAF Foundation's mission is to support the health and vitality of our community. And so, from the very beginning, our first meetings with Shannon and her team, now the growth during there ago, we were very, very impressed by the rigor of thought and the degree of commitment this family gave into this proposal. On the strength of that proposal, we were pleased to grant, actually, two, this is in the form of one, but essentially two grants totaling $110,000 to support the implementation, the creation of piloting, the thought process behind this program. And given what we have seen and the strength of what they have done, which has far exceeded, quite honestly, far exceeded our expectations, we have been very pleased to inform them that we will be not only renewing, but increasing that support for next year. So, we have made a commitment at $149,000 for next year and have invited rec and experts to share with us your vision for an even longer commitment, where this program could go over time. But the money ultimately is really just a tool. The talent is here and our goal is primarily to support that to the extent that we can. And so, you can imagine the pride that we feel being associated with this program. Our goal was to support a vision, a culture of health beginning in the schools and rippling across the entire community. And I think that what we have seen just in this short time has really been not just an inspiration for us, but kind of model that other school businesses in the country can begin to look to. We had the opportunity about a week ago, two weeks ago, to visit with other funders from around the nation and their comments were extremely favorable to say the least. They talked repeatedly about this program as being, as the school essentially is being the nexus of health in the community. And as I say, we're proud of that, and we were allowing us to do that and for transparency and recognition and letting us walk through all of that.
Any questions?
I've had 8,000. Steps today.
I hit 10,000 almost every day.
We're also sending out emails, which is really helpful to lead back, I was able to keep track of like what's on the radar and create a conversation, hold on about, fit this into our schedule and also was a reminder that I never showed up.
I checked you in. I checked you in.
You checked me in, but that was the last time I saw you. So, there was guilt to say with every email, like, oh, I'm going to have to think again.
You know, the most seriously thing to me is this culture, instead of culture, right? And the spoon piece of it is really, really key because eating habits are ridiculous, right? And it's a real good, well, I really appreciate the approach of having a culture, not just another exercise program, something that hasn't lasted. Thank you all.
Any questions?
Are we doing anything with preschool?
Not, not at this time, next year we could.
Going to move to preschool and how about that start? Or you don't mind?
We're, I mean, we're open to invitations. The way our approach was very much more autonomy and empowerment, so we were invited in, you know.
Yeah, I know his start's a little different, but.
Yeah, but.
But I bet they'll invite you.
They invite us and the principal has a blessing and we work all those angles to make sure we're, we're okay.
Absolutely. Classroom-wise, they're all included and that's right, everybody's included, every step of the way.
The younger you start, the better.
Absolutely.
Thank you all so much. I remember it was just an idea and I listened, it was all fuzzy. I tried to envision it and this is a great example of the decision phase. When you enter the decision phase, after that, they make the decision, absolutely radical determination to make the work. And it's miraculous. I've never seen anything like it in all my years, 42 years, and it takes and suddenly that came together so quickly, so effectively, made such a significant difference. So, wow. And we sat around interviewing, I mean, it just dried people and the camera did a great job of adjusting the lighting. So, thank you all very much. Wish we could send a meeting right now. Chairman, board, I think the next item is an update. I had a, I conducted a parent and faculty meeting and a parent meeting last Wednesday and I had some super kind of initiatives and things I think would, would help with security and safety around our schools. I kind of felt like, you know, leap and a net will appear. I did not consult anyone with my final list. I talked to the shared department, I talked to some office staff, some of the teachers, I did some research. And I thought there's important things that we needed to do. And I thought there's important things that we needed to do. And I didn't want to take a long time to set some priorities in place. So I wanted to inform the board, I sent you the PowerPoint I used for the faculty meeting and for the parent meeting. I wanted to talk to you about what we're doing now. I wanted to list some projects, the cost, most importantly, the funding source, the priority, expected completion, and the completion date, and then some thoughts. Now, all these can be done right away. Some may never be done, but we're going to look at the possibilities. I would hope that they could all be done. These are not in any particular order. Large monitors for the video SRO office, there are probably, on one monitor, twenty-some pictures. All the cameras, they're hard to see. So I'm calling the sheriff, he said we'd love to have large monitors, our technology budget could do it. So, the school said, "I'll get that done." It was done on May the fifth. So the school resource officers have much larger monitors that can actually see and recognize with detail who's around the school. They don't have to swim and update and determine who it is. The second one, remove propane tanks daily. That's already been done, no cost. When Mr. Burley cooked his famous hamburgers, then he shuts it off and puts them in a safe location, leaving them outside. Behind the high school, there's an area called Flatwood, and I wanted a gate coming from there. Only costs one-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, capital improvement. And we expect to have that done on the twelfth. Interior case for the school, I need to find out how much it was. So, Mrs. Vol, Executive Director of Academic Services, I'm sorry.
Administrative.
Administrative services, all those things. I assigned her, as an executive service, to look into this. It's three-thousand-five-hundred dollars per gate. We're looking at the possibility of the safety grant. And we're still deciding how many gates we need. That could go up to twenty-five, maybe we'll, might do, but we want to really look at limiting. When I talk with the school resource officers and the school administration, when we have athletic events, there are people that we don't know all in the school. We want to look at movement. Stop our gates at the schools. Several of us drive around the schools at least a few times a day. And I think it'd be advantageous for someone not good to drive around the school to be recognized. We don't even have a press, we got alarm and camera exterior doors. The funding may be, again, through the safety grant. We've had a little bit of a problem with, especially after-school events, doors being open. Parents should open the doors for somebody else, let them come in, and it's open. Some staff have done that. So, I finally said, "Look, we need alarms on the exterior doors and the camera." So the alarm goes off, makes outfit sound, and takes a picture, and we automatically find out who's opening our door. Speed bumps for the elementary school. Again, ground services are basically looking at, look at improvements. That's a thousand-eighty dollars. Sometimes parents seem to be in a hurry. And that's dangerous for our small children when they come in or back up. And we really think that the speed bumps will be a great asset. We already have a listing of badge holders. I got that list on the fifth. So we actually know who has a badge and where they can be let in. We have to repair some of our cameras. We have a lot of cameras. And some of them, I'm finding out, are not in proper working order. So we're in the process of determining which ones need fixing and how much ever costs. The next two go together, slotted windows, both schools, five-hundred-and-twenty dollars. This is to go with the visitor login. Billing services paying for that. We have the money this year at three-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. The way this works, small black boxes, someone comes to the front, they ring the bell, we say, "Give us your name." Jerry Blair, VFC, Johnny Jones, before. And then we let them in, the out code. Then they put their driver's license in the machine, and it lets us know if someone should not be in the school, like if they're on the sex offender list, right away. That's us there. We can put own information in it. It will automatically print out their driver's license picture with their name on it, date, and time. They sign in. So if they're to see Mrs. Jones and Mrs. Smith, also let them know, they'll come in from the school, escort the parent to the classroom, and escort them back. And I think about it, we all have these badges, we know each other. If anyone in the school that doesn't have the visitor, they happen to get through, then our faculty staff will say, "It's nice to see you. Please, you know, let's very often get your visitor pass." When they leave, they have to put their license back in again, deactivate it, and sign out. And I think that is something that absolutely is critical. We'll do some training on the tenth. We have to implement this on the twelfth. At the parent meeting, we explain this in depth so people would understand. And I think that's a great asset. Keys, we absolutely, making sure we know exactly who has keys, what they fit. And when they're not coaching or not working with us, then we get the keys back. In order to have electric hookups and a port-a-coat boost for the visitor login, we needed a thousand dollars to do that. Two things that we're still talking about, either a school resource officer or an SSO or a school security officer, I don't have any idea where that's at yet. Kind of looking at it, but as far as funding source, I don't know. And also, some of the masters in social work that can complete, working with a couple of students, to go to the home, to have another picture of our student body, for the students in the school, to be part of the eligibility committee meeting, I think is critical. So these are just beginning steps, things that we can fund ourselves, that we have money for. And the ones that are blank, it's our job to find finances for that. I have some other things I'm incorporating that is not for public consumption. So that's just an added security that we don't talk about. But I think these are all doable. And I hope that certainly that, it does not just kind of take forward action, but I'm open to you looking at that, probably at any time, this meeting, future meetings, come by and see me, see if you can look at where we're headed. I know these are important. And I feel like this is the first step. And my next steps, initiative as superintendent. Robinson, do we have the other slides too? We have, not just this, there are some proactive things that I'd like to do. Pardon me?
Alex.
Yes. In talking to the sheriff's office, active shooter response, it's alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. If there is an active shooter in the school, there's training to go through. This is in concert with the law enforcement agency, and it saves lives. And they have training, all of the United States, there's training in the month of June and July, as close as Spotsylvania County, there's some Hampton, Alexandria, they're all around. OPR Officer, primary responsibility, is Mrs. Jones. She's going to work with the major and make this a reality. I think the training is extremely important. Certified trainers to come in and work with our faculty staff, our students. It's a combination of online and face-to-face training. And I've been really impressed with what I've seen and listening to the Sheriff's Department. I think that any school system anywhere should go through this. The second part, OPR Officer, primary responsibility, will be Shannon Grimsley. And this is Sandy Hook Resources. And there are two programs. I don't want to spend a lot of time with this because you have this information. Two programs for children, two for adults. Please go online, sandyhookpromised.org. This is very proactive. First, for children, grades two through twelve, is start by saying hello, start with hello. You see a child sitting in lunchroom by himself, students are very ready to go by, say, "Hey, how you doing? Let me talk to you." Building relationships. Second for students is to say something sometimes, and this is for parents. We don't know what to say, how to say it, who to say it to. And this is for grade seven through twelve, to look at social media, how do you talk to your parents about it, trusted adults, when you, when something is going on and you'd like to alert the authorities and see what should be done. And again, certified trainers at no cost in revision, will come from Sandy Hook, Connecticut, will train everyone, not just dress shoes and teachers, but community members. There are two other components for adults, the mental health, first aid, which shows the signs that if someone is suicidal, someone may harm themselves or others. It really is well done and teaches people to recognize signs, what to do about. The last one, safety assessment intervention. Dr. Duri Cornell, University of Ridgeway, Virginia, has developed safety assessment intervention strategies, and he does workshops in conjunction with Sandy Hook Promise. The minimum is ten schools. We have two, so I see eight more, and I'm working on that. And I think it won't be very difficult at all, eight more schools. It's outstanding training for adults. And again, we're not segmenting just our students or our faculty members and staff members, our community. It's all working together. And I think it's absolutely make us much more aware and a better division. The last thing I've talked about with parents and with teachers, there are four issues that we need to work on this summer. One is having overall revamping of the code of conduct, talk about student movement in the building, issue of cell phones and backpacks. I can't answer cell, ah, that's beyond me, you know. However, I think, yeah, the advocacy and prevention and the crisis management team, those committees that we get together, form a steering committee, and we will revamp the code of conduct together, make some decisions, and also include student representation. What do you do with cell phones? What do we do with backpacks? My grandson, at his school, brings a backpack to school, it's in the locker, he can't have a backpack. My grandchildren in Atlanta, they don't even have backpacks. So, you know, when you look at the Sandy Hook, there's a video, they talk about one million, one million threats of violence against schools. One million. That's staggering. Those of you who have not seen it, just go to sandyhookpromised.org and look at the first video, the every video. It'll open your eyes. I know you all have seen it. Bye-bye. And so, we're looking at some really proactive, positive, wonderful things to do. So children feel safe. So that is an update for the board. I think that answers questions or come and see me. Come and see me. All right, the next one. As you know, the board supervisor reduced our budget by twenty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. And we do have to balance the budget. So here's my proposal. You can see that, hopefully. You've got it. I want to explain it in a little more detail. When we look at balancing the budget, there's three area reductions and one of an increase. And I'll tell you why. The category, first one, is class of instruction on the information you have. If you can look at page seven, you can do that now. We're reducing class of instruction by twenty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. The reason we can do this so far, we've stopped some vacancies, so far, it's a hiring differential. We've saved money in hiring. People leave, with retirees, they stay, and we're really proud of that. We love their experience, and they do. We don't, they don't replace the thirty-year, replace a thirty-year veteran with a thirty-year teacher. So, we can certainly save some money in salaries, event that's there. The second area, transportation services, we're looking at salary differentials for transportation and compensation of drivers, because we made some changes. And we can reduce our budget by three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars. So as you look on page twenty, you're going to look at the line item, instead of one-million-four-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-twenty, you're looking at one-point-four-four. So we save that. We will not be hiring a summer custodian this summer, we normally do. We'll just do the thing with the crew we have. That will save two-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars with these. We're also looking at FICA, looking at the other things that add on to it. So, when we reduce that, we look too far. We couldn't separate it out because when you don't have a salary, you reduce your FICA, et cetera. So was a decrease of twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. So in talking to Mr. Honnaker and Miss Whit, we put eight-hundred-and-forty dollars back into capital improvements, and that's on page twenty-two. And we're looking at security-related items that'll help you out. And also, if there's any other capital improvements you need along the way, we have that money and a little bit of pushing. So the total budget change comes out, probably enough, for twenty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. So the county contribution remains the same as last year, nine-million-eighty-nine-thousand-ninety-eight dollars. And the total fifty-year, twenty-eighteen school budget is twelve-million-six-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-ten dollars. And we'll certainly recommend that when it comes time to vote, the board approve that. So, we can post all this on the financial section. Those of you who are here tonight, if you look on board docs, you can look at all that on the public side and the board will probably come up. So I'll contain comments, questions. What I really try to do, let's preserve your initiative of the dual enrollment. I didn't want that to go away. And that would be, you're seeing us say, "Oh, I'll just cut that. Ah, let's see." So, we had to dig, we had to look around, and really go line by line by line and figure it out. But we wanted to keep the priorities the same. And I think that's critical to the board and for our students. And also, I want you to know, this is not a five-minute thing. This took a lot of time. We don't have a lot of rubber room, but we found it. So, I'm proud of my finance department, and I'm proud that I could submit this team and keep the board proud.
Any questions?
As I understand it, the board priorities of assisting with the North Carolina Community College Student tuition assistance is still in the budget?
Yes, sir. The thirteen-thousand dollars that you put in is still there, intact. That's important.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks to our finance staff, Dr. Blair, I'm sure whoever else got involved in that. But thanks for making that work. All right, everybody.
Yes, sir.
Is there a report from our headwaters representative?
Headwaters.
I can get that.
All right, Headwaters is starting the summer course program, June nineteenth to the twenty-ninth. They began the program by discussing the early, proposed early care literacy and how they could help in supporting that. And Anne Simone Payne and just talked about the Starfish program. And next step, how they can help with the transition from, with assisting students in their transition into post-secondary life. In other words, once they get out of here, we're still going to track them.
A report of MBGS, Mr. Grob.
We didn't meet this time, but the seniors had their senior banquet the same night as the seniors here had their banquet. One year, I'm going to try to figure out a way to change one of them. But I think our seniors decided to come here as opposed to.
All right, moving to public comment. If there's anybody that'd like to address the board this evening, if you could rise and come to the podium and state your name and your district. So at this time. All right, moving on to action items. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the budget changes with the new bottom line, 12,627,610? So we have a motion from Mr. Roof. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Johnson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, those know. Mr. Water, is there any new business?
Are we going to have an update or not an update, but an opportunity to discuss Dr. Blair's thoughts and ideas?
I guess after the, so, I don't, we're not ready to have that discussion yet.
I know, I know.
But certainly it's going to be.
Before everything gets done.
It's about to happen this summer. And, you know, it's interesting, I was, here's what I was thinking about there on the same topic. So there was some discussion, I don't know if anybody attended the hearings, but there was some discussion about, it's not a lack of trust, it's just a lot of questions around how we end up at the end of our budget year and we have some money and we apply that to projects that we've been working off for, I don't know, a decade?
Sure.
And that there's a lot of questions around that. And so I started thinking, is there a better way for us to accomplish these things than the way we've been doing it? And the difficult matter is, so the supposition is that we would instead of doing those kinds of projects, you know, return whatever, 50K, 60K, whatever it is, to the board of supervisors and then say, "Well, here's the projects we'd like to implement. Would you please give me the 60K back so I could do the projects?" Here's the problem with the plan. We have to get the project stuff, these particular class of projects, when there's no students here. So we're always in this time pickle. I feel like I'm stuck between second and third.
Last be done on June 30.
You gotta get, you gotta commit the funds to get the, you gotta have the goods, commit the funds to get the job done before August 12, before the students come back. So it's just good for more people to have a little thought about why is we do some of the things we do. Because, and by the way, could we still accomplish the same types of things? Yes, just a year later. So we'd be, and it could be that this might what has to happen to regain public confidence in the fact that, you know, we do these projects with end-of-year money. The truth is, just so everybody's aware, we don't get to manage a reserve as a school. We can't carry over funds from one year to the other. The checkbook gets zeroed out on June 30 and we start over fresh on July the 1st. So if we don't use it by June 30, it's not that we lose it, it goes back to the county and would have to be re-appropriated to us to do this. The problem is the timeline doesn't match the window of opportunity we have by the time things get approved and money gets moved and we can apply it to a proposal that we received or is a result of R and P. So it's not as simple as it was communicated during the various public hearings we've been sitting through for the past two months. That's all that I just want to make sure we know.
It's also not knowable. We have a good winter and we save X dollars or a few. But we have to budget for a normal winter. Or if we have no buses break down, we save some money there. Or another number, and then laps and turnover, staffing, that's what Dr. Blair, what I call laps and turnover and we call something else. The difference between new hires and retirees, that differential. We don't know what that's going to be until the end of the year.
I would just say to the board, you know, if there are things we're trying to accomplish and they were part of a 10-year plan that we had made to accomplish these tasks, it's all very consistent use of the funds. We've done it without creating a new, get a new bond that has to be paid off. So I think it's still a conscientious thing as long as it was part of a capital improvement plan that we had already put in place. And so I think the thing that shapes people is when, if we were to do something that wasn't part of the plan. Problem.
Well, I think we need to, if we look back at the rest of board supervisors meeting, one of the members said that the money that we had left at the end of the year, if we would take that money and put it in the elementary windows, they would try to supplement the budget.
They take three votes.
Well, that's true.
Well.
What I'm saying, but I think we need to think about those things, they need to be remembered.
One of the things I was thinking about was a separate capital improvement budget within our budget. A budget that says this amount of money is going to be used between this year for capital improvement. And that would be the amount of money we would use for windows or whatever. Whatever is in that capital improvement. And I do think Mr. Parrish talked about including those things in your budget or having a separate auxiliary budget or just capital improvement. And that they would look at differently. I don't know.
We've done, we've done things like this before. And I remember, there's a lot of pros and cons to this.
I'm sure.
The auxiliary GM, we, there was an issue with the cost of that, how it's going to be managed and the attempt to manage it as an auxiliary, as a extra budget item. And so the truth is, it came down, all right, so it had to be a school budget item because you're building a facility on school property, which is our responsibility. And there was, there was a matter of how is this thing going to get funded? All I'm going to tell you is, we ended up, in my opinion, making decisions about that facility that were not the best value for the county long-term. We had to make a lot, we had to cut a lot of things that I believe that in, if you had a 20-year view, you would have said, "That's not a good use of taxpayer money." And we got pinned down in that situation. So those sheer things, they seem like, seems like a good idea, but in the end, and it could be, depending upon the item, you know, by the way, and I've talked to supervisors too. If our furnace goes and we don't have any money, we're just going to go tell them. Hey, the furnace just went, and we don't have an extra 80K or whatever it is to cover this thing. And we'll deal with it as a challenge. But this, this idea that we thought we were doing, we thought we were being the stewards by trying to clip away at the 10-year facility projects. It seemed to me that this cycle, and I'm not sure how many other ones have proceeded, we kind of took it on the chin for trying to accomplish those things.
Well, I think we may have tried to accomplish them without explaining very well how they were being accomplished.
Well, the, you know, and this might be, I don't know the amount of treatment, but there was the dissimulation that we didn't get best value because we have to do things so quickly at the very end of the budget year. And so.
Well, what they're also saying, if we don't do it now, we're waiting, you know, two, three years from now. And the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost, so that's not very good value.
So just hoping to state where I thought.
The point about the black office and the different vendors was a minimal amount of money. It wasn't that much of a difference.
Well, but they didn't know that.
I know that. But nobody, like I said, nobody said what the dollar amount was.
That's right.
Because it was sealed.
And so, but the matter to me is its credibility. So we may be, you know, we have to get ourselves to a point where we understand, coming up on the end of the fiscal year, what is our approach going to be? Could it be business as usual, we have some facility, they finish the windows, we're going to knock it out? And then write a report that says, "Oh, by the way, we can plan to knock this out. We're going to do it, just how much we spent to do it." Or do we, what are they saying? Is it time for us to just say, "Oh, we finished the year, it's June the 30th, here's 60K that we didn't use. We were going to spend it on windows, but we're not going to do it. Here's the 60K back. We'd really like to get it back so we can do the project. If you get it to me, I'll do it on June the 30th of 2018." Because I don't have time to do the project now. Follow me? That's what, that's what I'm saying. And we have to.
You're right, but if we could say on May 15th, a good estimate of what's going to be left over, then you could approach the board with that dollar and say, "This is what we want to get done with the, what's left over." And kind of get, maybe use the word permission to do that.
Well, I think that's what we need. We need some affirmation, we're about to do this thing. We think it's consistent with this theme. We want to execute this thing and here's how we're planning on using the last. No matter, I would have this, do we know on May 15th? Do we know?
I don't know.
Do we know by June the 1st?
What do you know by, what do you know by 15th May? What's to be left over?
I mean, we can estimate it out, but you don't know your revenues until June.
Until June 29.
You don't really know what you're actually getting.
Well, no, we get it, we get it done before that.
We have an estimate, but I don't have anything concrete until June.
But how, until June when?
Mid-June.
End of May, first of June.
Middle of June.
Middle of June. Then how have we decided that we have X number of dollars left over in the past?
Gary's been able to estimate it based on what we, what our revenues have been. So he can estimate it out, but to have a concrete number, you.
But you can have a ballpark.
You can have a ballpark, but it's not.
It's a big ballpark.
Big ballpark.
Right. By, right.
By when?
By, so you'd have to have us before the supervisors meet in June. In order to get that affirmation that we're about to execute Plan A.
We have first kids in bus retire for our students. So we act your year and hope we give back or do we go and expect here what we're going to do? When is a dollar here for the rainwater?
Oh, or what do you, you're saving X number of dollars because there's no more clear breeze blowing through the element?
Certainly clarify the process. How it works.
I think that's what we need. So we just need to communicate better what our intentions are as soon as we can. Because there seems to be too much mystery around this.
Is that margin same question, open education, money fixed, the one, so the rainwater's come in and the heating bill is lower, you save money, but if I can do three, one, and then it's right?
Who would go to Disney World in July anyway?
That's where it's cheapest. It's crazy.
All right, all right. I'm just kidding. All right. What will we do on that? Is that new business?
Well, I, I think I asked about.
All right. All right. Is there any other new business? Our next scheduled meeting is June the, I didn't write the date. Actually, you know, another interesting thing might be to give you an update on superintendent search process. Guess what? We're still waiting for the application to the 19th.
May 19th.
May 19th is when the applications are due. At which time, we'll then wait an additional four business days to make sure everybody mailed it. And then we'll get, board members will get copies of whatever was submitted. We'll all have a meeting to go through those. For Dr. Blair. That's about all we know right now. The 23rd, right, I wasn't sure everybody could make the 23rd. So tentatively, our plan is to have a closed session on 23rd related to personnel. It's a closed session. So it's not going to be any of the session business executed on that. There's, it will be an advertised school board meeting for a closed session. All right. All right, at this time, the school board will reconvene in the closed session. We'll take a short recess while we let everybody go home. And we'll be reconvene in closed session in 10 minutes.